...make tonight because I guess she has a little stomach flu, so we will be going to meet without her. So we can begin with a moment of silent meditation. Yeah. We'll go to your positions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Renee, take it away.
Ms. Davis, yes. Ms. Ferguson, yes. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Perkins?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Thank you. Counsel, we've had the opportunity to review the minutes of August 24, 2015. Any questions concerned or motion?
Motion to approve minutes from August 24.
Ms. Davis? Yes. Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Thank you. And counsel, we've had an opportunity to review current expenses. Any questions concerned or motion?
This is my company. It's for a side. They're kind of the middle man, they even, we had to repair a sidewalk, driveway approach in front of Plain City Computers. Even had to repair it at Lea University. Mr. Kennedy.
What's the environmental services? Okay, I see environmental services.
Massi.
Massi. Yeah. It's, uh...
They do our lab testing for our water and wastewater.
Massi, yeah. Yeah, they do our testing of samples from the water and wastewater. How often is that done by them? Because wait, it's not a recurring charge you see every month. Wait, how often do we send samples to them?
Twice a week.
Motion?
Motion to approve the expenses listed.
Ms. Davis? Yes. Ms. Ferguson? Yes. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right, I noticed today that we have several speakers and visitors. I might count five. We're going to start with Mr. Erickson, Scott, from Rock Mill, has a small presentation for the...
Thank you. He said, "My name is Scott Erickson from Rock Mill Financial."
Thank you.
Basically, this is kind of a continuance of some of the work we've done prior and as a result of some of counsel's deliberations from their retreat. So it's intended to be sort of a high level of what to look for next in terms of steps that you will be looking at moving through this year and then into, into the next spring. So this is kind of like a high level look at potential levy options or things that you might need to do between now and December and then in March in order to get something potentially on the ballot for prospective projects. This first page, the needs of the village, this isn't intended to be a comprehensive list. This is just some sort of high level items and further deliberations required in exploring the projects that will be coming forward and that sort of thing. But we have identified some things with the Village Services Center, the consolidation type projects, which will include, you know, police station, administrative offices, maintenance offices, council chambers, utility offices. There's also been some identified improvements at the park with restrooms, possibly some paving or some parking improvements, as well as downtown street scape, roadway paving, and potentially some water and sewer type improvements as well. So like I said, this is not necessarily a comprehensive list, but just some of the items that have been identified through administration and counsel. So when it comes to paying for these projects, moving on to the next page, how is money raised for these sorts of things? You have a few options. The first of which is a property tax, and we'll, I'll illustrate these a little bit further on in the presentation, but three options are a property tax, an income tax, a bond issue, or some combination of those three therein. Moving forward, we'll go to the property tax first. What is the property tax? The property tax is paid by local individuals as well as businesses. It's based on your assessed value of your property or business's property. Property taxes are levied in mills, and I illustrated a little bit here. To give you an idea of the most recent collection year, your individual tax base versus your business tax base is about 81% to 19%, which means that residents would be picking up the portion of a property tax that is roughly an 80-20 split between residents and business within the village. One mill is about $35 per $100,000 home value. The way that calculation is done is a property value of $100,000, you take 35% of that, that gets you what's called the assessed value, and then multiply by the one mill to get to $35. So $100,000 home has an assessed value of $35,000, which comes to about $35 per one mill. Property tax would provide annual income to the village year over year from first year of collection through whatever the final collection year is levied on the ballot. Moving on to the income tax. An income tax is paid both by the residents, local businesses, as well as some non-residents. So those folks who come into the village to work, their income is also taxed as well. And we'll discuss that a little bit on furtherers, why that makes a difference between, there may be a significant difference between income tax and property tax in terms of expense to the local residents. The income tax is also for whatever length or duration is placed on the ballot between first year of collection and the final year of collection, but it's an annual collection to the village in terms of revenues. Moving on to the bond issue. A bond issue is much like the property tax levy. You have the same business to individual split here, and it's paid by the individuals and businesses, same, same collection in terms of levied mills, same in terms of assessed value and how it's collected. However, with a bond issue, it's, the money is provided to the village as an upfront lump sum by means of a bond issue, so your residents would approve of the bond issue. You would then sell securities in markets or to a local bank to get an upfront lump sum, and then the collections over years would be provided to pay the debt service on those bonds. In the case of the village, most recent assessed value equates to a one mill that will support approximately 1.275 million as a bond issue, and that's estimated for over 25 years, just using a ballpark estimate of about 3.75% interest rate. So you can kind of size that based on one mill, so two mills would produce a little over $2.5 million. Now, what's the cost to taxpayers? If you can follow along this chart, this kind of gives us a look at, excuse me, what is an estimated annual need or potential estimated annual need? You'll see that $130,000, if you, if the village desires to receive $130,000 on an annual basis, that equates to about a .1% income tax. The equivalent property tax to produce the same $130,000 is about 1.72 mills. And then moving across the page there, you see the estimated annual income tax cost of $51.89 and property tax cost of $107.67, and those are based on the U.S. Census Bureau median home value and median household incomes. So there's a number of different ways you can crunch those numbers. We chose to use the median values from the U.S. Census Bureau as sort of a starting point, just kind of giving you an idea of what these mills and what these percentages do in terms of the cost to the resident. Then as you move up the scale here from $130,000 incrementally, you see the, the income tax, .1%, .2%, all the way up to .5%. If there's any questions about the, this chart, I'm happy to answer them. And again, that, if you look at, for example, the .5%, 8.59 mills, you see somewhat of a disparity between the income tax and the property tax, 259 versus 538. That is again because with the income tax, you do have some outside residents that work in the community that will be supporting that income tax as well. It's not just a burden carried by, solely by your residents and your local businesses. Moving on to pros and cons. Pros of income tax. An income tax will capture tax revenues from taxpayers other than just the residents, as I was just saying. It's less expensive on the residents, as you saw from the chart, than the property tax, basically because that burden is distributed to a wider pool than just the local residents and community businesses. The amount of the tax an individual paid is based just on their income, and the income tax grows with wealth and population. For example, with an income tax, if your, if your overall wealth...
Income then, residents...
A year, over two years, goes to $30 million. The income tax stays the same, so your collections actually increase year over year versus with the property tax, it's based on the dollar amount. So as your assessed valuations appreciate, that, that tax levy is rolled back. You do receive some new money based on new construction, but with the existing assessed valuation, the tax melges roll back, so you don't receive quite as, quite as much of a kick year over year from the property tax than you would receive from an income tax in an expanding tax base. Income tax cons, subject to economic cycles, that's still a little bit fresh in everybody's mind from 2007, 2008, if anyone knows, then, you know, sometimes incomes get hit, and in that case, you might see some volatility in your income tax collections. So that is one of the cons of the income tax. Property tax pros, the revenues are generally more predictable than income tax. Like I said, income tax, based on economic cycles, going to have more volatility in it. Property taxes tend to stay more, more stable over time, so you'll kind of have a better idea of what your overall year-over-year revenues are going to be for property tax. And like I said, it also grows with new construction, but in an expanding economic cycle, you might not see quite as much bang for your buck with the property tax as you would from an income tax. Cons of the property tax, the equivalent property tax from that chart you'll see is more expensive than the income tax, and again, with the economic cycle growth, it's not as productive, is the word we like to use, in terms of how much additional revenues can be generated based on economic growth and construction. So where does that leave us? Next steps, kind of identify further, obviously, what the projects are going to be, what the costs are going to be. We need to receive estimates for the construction costs of the new consolidated Village Service Center, complete additional estimates based on other improvements and capital needs, you know, what counsel identifies, what administration identifies as priority projects. And from that, once we have the actual costs in our hands, we can kind of calculate what the equivalent income and property tax will be, or estimates will be based on those project costs and what the upfront expense is going to be or the expense over time is going to be. Present those to counsel and then, and then act. Counsel needs to act prior to the Board of Election filing deadlines. It says in your books there, the exact deadlines will be confirmed with bond counsel. I printed these before I actually confirmed with bond counsel, but I did receive work back. I'll just, I'll just give you this note so you don't have to write anything down, but basically the deadline is December 16th for the March 15th ballot. That's 90 days prior. However, it does require an ordinance and a resolution, and the ordinance, as you know, requires three readings and potentially a 30-day waiting period. So, tell me about that to you. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Now, like I said, this is just intended to be sort of a high level to kind of get the wheels spinning and let you know what, what to expect between now and next March.
The cost to the taxpayers with the income tax, we don't allow swapping, and we don't have a lot of industries or businesses here, so most people work out of Plain City, which means they pay an income tax to whatever city they work for.
That's right.
Which is usually 2%, and then ours as well. So does that account for it here?
That would have to be, yep, that is not, that is not included in these numbers, so that's something that would have to be calculated to, like I said, once we have the actual costs of everything upfront, and we can do the precise calculations and considerations between the property tax and the income tax. You're exactly right.
Is there any historical research that goes into looking at what, historically speaking, has been more successful in this area, whether property versus income tax?
Yeah, absolutely. That, that will be part of the process between now and when counsel decides to make a final decision. We do look at past election history, both here in the village and in the surrounding communities, and determine everything from what works best, if it's an income tax or property tax, if it works, you know, best as a special election, if it's a, you know... So we, so we dive down into the data pretty deeply. Any other questions?
Well, thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Appreciate it. I'll leave this copy for there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much, Scott.
Appreciate it.
I promised Mr. Erickson that I'd get him in and out of here as he had other things to do, so we'll go back to our uni, usual order of things. We'll do more reports, and then we'll move on to the speakers that we have. So, starting with fiscal officers.
I forwarded you all a copy of my audit. Didn't know if there was any questions regarding it. I mean, there wasn't a whole lot to report, so if you had any questions, we wanted to answer them, so. There is none.
Easy enough? Chief?
I just had a few things. I attended, I, well, I spoke to the Plain City Business Association as a guest speaker a couple weeks ago. Also Officer Philip Greenbaum attended some mechanical and shotgun breaching training at Apodah. Officer Eric Connor, who we appointed the last time, or received permission or whatever to hire him full-time, passed his physical that was required by the police and fire pension. He's been working full-time since September the 3rd. He's doing a good job. The 2015 sober, or drive sober, get pulled over mobilization ended. We participated in that, which, that means we're eligible for some free, very expensive equipment that we, we should be getting pretty soon. The downtown car show went without incident, except a few parking complaints. There was, there was a pretty good turnout for that. And just a reminder to lock your vehicles at night, there's, there was a rash of vehicle break-ins in a couple neighborhoods, and we're working on some leads now, trying to figure out who that was, and that's all I have at this time.
Chief. What else do you want to say?
A couple of things. On Friday, September 4th, during that quick storm we had rolled through and with loss of power, the water and wastewater treatment plants sustained a lightning strike that did considerable damage to some pumps, motors, relays. Wade's working with contractors and his staff to get everything back up and putting together a price sheet that we can turn in. We will make the insurance claim to recover our losses in that event. Lantern Lane pavement repairs are complete. We are working on closing and winterizing the Aquatic Center. Inga and I met with the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation regarding a grant opportunity that we are considering and will probably apply for in the very near future. And last thing is Renee Dale and I met with an architect a week and a half ago, and we will be meeting with another one tomorrow in regards to Mr. Erickson's request for getting some cost estimates on a city hall complex and what that looks like. So we'll be continuing working with the architects to get that to them.
Ms. Vaughn, one of the things I know we talked about at our retreat was kind of also figuring out what it would save us to close the buildings that we would be closing. I don't know if at the same time you're putting together that estimate, you could get that information?
We are. We've been compiling that data and working with Rock Mill and trying to, we need, we need a couple of square footage estimates so that we can identify where our energy costs are going to be before we can put some hard numbers to that. But that's, that's a significant reason why we're doing or considering or wanting a, a new city hall is because of the inefficiencies with it and some cost savings that we will recover through multiple copiers and redundant personnel, Wi-Fi, internet, things like that, that we're paying for out of four buildings currently, and to have them all in one facility would, would be an instant savings in that respect. So we'll certainly continue to work with them to get those numbers put together. And that's all I have, unless there's any further questions.
Well, all right, moving on, President Potem. I have nothing to report as President Potem today. So, sir?
I met with Renee last week. We have, Regional Income Tax Authority has proposed a model change to the municipal income tax code. It's based upon statutory changes that occurred. These would take effect January 1, 2016. Unfortunately, didn't get a whole lot of lead time on to have them jump on this, so, I mean, literally, the, they came out with the actual proposed model code about a week and a half, two weeks ago. So there are some things in there that are going to be difficult to try to get in a very short period of time, but we're going to work on it. We'll get it done. I did put a call in to Rita today just to see if there's a way to kind of streamline the process to make it a little bit quicker and more efficient so that everyone, you're not spending a lot of legal costs to be drafted, but also give us a much easier transition between the one model code from our existing code, because the language is kind of is considerably different and, and it would take a lot of work. We're working on that. We'll get it done. I think the proposal that I've made to them makes sense, that we'll just kind of have our existing code effective through December 31st, 2015, because we have to be able to collect back taxes. So we have to have a code in place to collect back. January 1, 2016, that would be adopted as a model code, so it'd be a lot easier to do that. Even within that model code, there is some things that we're going to have to tailor just to the village, but it's not nearly as tall a task as trying to merge the existing ordinances. Other than that, just resolutions, we have that one case that's pending that is still without, well, we just got a judge on the case, and we're getting a new case scheduled, so that's on the long line litigation. Otherwise, that's it.
All right, well, thank you very much. Any questions? All right, planning and zoning?
We meet this Wednesday. We're looking to finalize, as a committee, the property maintenance codes, and hoping to have a public hearing on October 21st.
Thank you. BZA, we've had no need to meet, so nothing to report there. CIC?
The only thing I have to report is, it's kind of separate from CIC, but we did attend a seminar, Wade and I attended a seminar last Friday in regards to GIS and how we can start utilizing GIS. Could be a countywide thing, and we're working with David Kell to figure out how we can put that all together. So it was a great, it was a great seminar. I think we got a lot out of it, and we're going to continue to do some research on how we can move in that direction.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Parks? You've all had the opportunity, I think it's been circulated, the, the result of our several meeting effort to coordinate and uniformly provide directions for the usage of the park in the event of special events and park rentals. We also put together a grant application package with the idea that we would have a grant committee. I don't know if personnel finances discussed, I assume that Mr. Vaughn's discussed that personnel finance, that we would set aside some money for the grant committee to allow grants to divvy that out or hand that out to interested parties for use of their park. We developed an overview of the grant application package and what we thought would be some guidelines for that particular committee to hand out the money. Mayor indicated to me that she wanted to be here for the, the vote on this, so we'll table that, but I would like to hear everyone's response, opinions and whatnot, so we can at least have something permanent or something ready on the table next time around when she's here. So questions, concerns, thoughts, criticisms, what have you?
I guess what was the purpose of raising the rates much double to what they are now? Was other things looked at for other communities, but that, and did we look at resident versus non-resident like they had?
We didn't look at a resident versus non-resident. I don't think, I mean, we did talk about that and came up with the idea that it was fine just to keep it the way it was and not make that distinction. We were actually fortunate enough to have honor committee, Roberta, what's Roberta's last name? Sorry, Roberta. But anyway, she works for Columbus Parks and Rec. And so she was a font, she is a font of knowledge as to what is generally industry standard, if you will. And honestly, she kept pushing us to say, "These are too low, these are too low." And if you'd ask her about these particular rental fees right now, she would say, "They're way too low, they're way under market value." So I think she would have them be much higher, and we were all reticent to raise them at all, but recognizing that we have ongoing costs in the park, they're not getting any cheaper, so the rates do need to go up. We obviously want to establish a capital improvement fund, so these fees would go towards capital improvements at the park and be solely, you know, solely go to the park, park funds. So I, I think the idea at the end of the day that we came up collectively with was, while this does seem high from what we had it at, in the industry, it's not, it's actually low.
Was she looking at the city, I mean, the city of Columbus?
She was looking at the city of Columbus, yeah.
We're not going to even come close to the city of Columbus.
No, we're not going to compete with the city of Columbus. But yeah, I mean, we, honestly, we were relying largely on her opinion in determining what was the right amount. And like I said, she would say, "This is still too low," even though, you know, the amenities may not be the same what you're, you know, getting with the city of Columbus. So I suppose the way one can look at it is, like any other business, if the price of product and it's too high, it's not going to sell. You lower your price until it sells. I mean, at the end of the day, this isn't set in stone. If this particularly doesn't work for 2016 and we don't have park rentals, then lesson learned, and we move it down until we, you know, until we reach that point where it's, the product is priced correctly. I mean, none of us pretend to be experts in pricing what the value of a park is, we don't have such a person. But we do have such a person who is an expert in pricing Columbus parks, and her advice is that this is under market. Whether this results in lower individuals using the park or not, that remains to be seen. Now, of course, the budget will ask counsel to set aside an amount of money for the grant program. And we, in the grant application package, we indicated that we didn't want any one entity to receive any more than 20%. That way, we gave the ability to, we took away the ability from the committee to dole it out all to one entity, and that way, we ensured that at least five entities over the course of the year would receive an applicant, would receive a grant from, from the, from the committee. So while the fees are going up, fact of the matter is, hopefully, there will be some money put aside by this council to offset some of those fees for whomever the grant committee deems appropriate and were to further the goals and the purpose of the, of the grant.
So is the deposit part of the rental fee, or is it in addition to?
It would be in addition to, and if the parks returned in favorable condition, they would get that deposit back.
We talked about other ways to go about doing the deposit and whether they were too low, given, you know, the amount of damage that someone could do to the park, but historically speaking, Mr. Vaughn felt that, you know, we didn't need to raise the deposits any more than they are, so, you know, obviously, it's a fluid thing if one year are too low, I mean, we can revisit that as well, but any other questions?
Yes. I save $1,250 a day for park rental. I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the Plain City Events Committee. That'll kill any events that they will have in the park. I did call the Union County Fairgrounds. We can rent Union County Fairgrounds, all 48 acres, for one day for $1,000. Delaware County Fairgrounds has a flea market on Sundays. They are charged $305 for the use of a whole fairground. Marysville, as long as you rent a building, you can use the grounds for free. London, I did not call Madison County Fairgrounds, but London Parks, they are free. West Jeff, pretty much the same. I gave you a packet on Westerville. They waive park fees for event committees. I, I just think this is just too much money. I know you are talking about having a grant program in place. Excuse me, I'm sick. Kevin, was that going to be under Parks?
Currently, it's under mayor and administration.
Okay. And what do you have for that? Is it $3,000?
And that was just kind of like a placeholder, as I mentioned, in personnel finances, so we didn't, that, that cost was discussed in, in Parks Committee, I'm sorry, and they knew they couldn't set that, that this body had to set that. So when I put $3,000 in your budget, it was kind of as a placeholder to be determined by this group.
Pardon me, but if you guys get a grant that I'm doing the trees, all those trees are old like all of us in here, and they're going to age out, but I don't know if I'm out of line, I'm not in... out of line, I'm not in this too much.
We'll bring that up. We did get an email earlier this spring about a gentleman that wants to donate, I forget how many trees.
I'd be willing to plant them. I can run the equipment through Auger. I run the Bobcat and drill bit.
Okay. We'll have you talk to Mr. Vaughn after the meeting.
I might labor be donated.
It was an email from Bob forwarded back in April. He would like to donate 25 to 30 hardwood trees. So, yeah, so that's in the call, but, but back to that.
Pardon me if I interrupt.
That's okay. Thank you.
If I may address some of the rates and what others charge, and just to point out, for many, many, many years, the general fund supported the parks in the pool. Parks would get typically $50,000 a year. I don't get that anymore, the parks doesn't get that anymore. I don't get that in my budget. So, we're trying to do as much as we can in the park and maintain it to the standards that we were even 10 years ago without that $50,000. So, we've got to generate the money from somewhere and the balance is going to be like Mr. Kennedy said, that we don't hurt ourselves by getting rid of events, but when we don't charge enough, where we give fees, we waive fees, it hurts our ability to operate the park and maintain the park. So, you know, that $50,000 is a lot that we're trying to accomplish.
Find other alternatives.
Are you done, Kevin?
With that in mind, you know, it's not like we have people beating down our door wanting to rent the park. So, you know, if you're going to raise the rent rates and you're going to lose Plain City Events, the spring event we have, the fall event, you're not going to make anything. And then, if you're giving grants, that's borrowing from Peter to pay Paul. You're not going to be making money.
Well, part of what we have done when we determined what the proper cost should be was, we looked at the amount of staff that we had to put in place just to have someone rent the park. And at the end of the day, what we were renting the park for this year, we lose money every time someone rents our park. And no business stays in business by losing money on a particular product, and that is just good, sound business. And if the product needs to cost X number of dollars in order to be sustainable, then it's got to cost X number of dollars. And if that means no fall festival or no other event, then that's what it means. We cannot continue to take a loss on a product and operate that product. We will not have a product that's quality and something that people want to use.
Okay. What are your exact costs for the day of fall festival?
The exact costs to put on an event is very difficult because we mow it every week, eight, nine months.
Go back to the subcontract.
Yeah. Let's just, if you have things you want to talk about, you need to sign the sign-in sheet, not to silence you, but certainly willing to listen to you, but you have to sign the sign-in sheet and then we will hear you, okay?
Appreciate that.
All right. Otherwise, it just kind of gets chaotic and everyone talks at one time and we can't get anything done. Thank you, Robert. Go ahead, Kevin.
So, just all of those, you know, putting gravel on the roads and maintaining trees, cutting trees down, maintaining facilities that are difficult, you can't put costs on an individual event other than hard labor to do those. And those are variable depending on the size of the event.
But aren't you going to have those cost anyhow? What you just said, mowing and gravel and, so what is the cost for an event?
What size event?
We'll talk about fall festival.
That's an unfair question to ask him for detail to that extent. I mean, he can look it up and maybe respond some other time, but...
Correct, but I mean, that's what they're saying, that these events are so costly, you know, I would like for them to back up their statement. They have to know, they should know that to begin with, shouldn't they?
Leslie, the budget that was distributed by Personnel Finance for Parks shows a budget for 2016 of almost $52,000 and revenue of $37,000. So, we've got a $15,000 deficit coming forward with the budget that came out of Personnel Finance, so I can understand a need to generate more revenue.
Correct, but they also spent $11,000 on camping software.
Every activity that the park uses is different. I mean, some requires extra, more labor than others. You can't put, you can't cite each particular time someone rents the park, it's a thousand dollars and it's a whole park. Because it's, sometimes it's a thousand dollars, sometimes it's $800, sometimes it's $1,600. Everything is different. This is the cost we came up with that we figured we need in order to maintain the park and the park be self-sufficient, so to speak. Because right now, it's not. And that's bad business. And whether that means a higher, higher, more expensive product, that's what it means.
But you're pricing your product too high to sell.
That's your opinion.
Okay.
And you can vote no on it, I suppose, but at the end of the day, this is what 10 other individuals determined is the right price based upon what the village needs to do in order to maintain this park and provide it for all the citizens to have.
All right. Well, let's see what council thinks.
And I would like to say in public meeting, and I've told you before, and you continue to throw this software in my face, and I've seen it on social media that I've made unauthorized purchase with this software. I did not make an unauthorized purchase. The software was vetted through the Parks Committee, brought to this group and then inserted into the budget that was approved by this entire body. I never once made an unauthorized purchase and it is software that we need to do business, just as the police department has software to do business, our water department has software to do business.
On February of '14, it was brought up to council, was asked to purchase camping software, Mr. Wolder, at that time. I'll find it, I've got it here somewhere. So, I do not misquote myself, that we did not think was in the best interest. Here it is.
I think we're a little bit foul of what we're discussing.
Let me, let me address that. He brought it up. I should have the...
No, you brought it up. You brought it up. We're talking about park rental.
Yes, but he is, he was saying, he's part of the subject and I would like to address that.
You can address that, Kevin. You don't need to do that here in the meeting.
Then why did he need to do it here in the meeting?
Because you brought it up, stopping both of you. We're not here to talk about, we're here to talk about the park rental. You say it's too expensive. So, you know, what I want and what I expect from you, if you just want to vote no on it, that's fine, but that's hardly constructive. Give us something that's constructive.
I did. I just did, when I told you how much it costs to rent Union County Fairgrounds.
You know what? This is not Union County.
Correct, and it's also not Columbus.
And I don't know that Union County is operating in a deficit like we are, and frankly, I don't care because I'm not, we're not here in Union County. We're running Plain City. All right, so if you've got something constructive that'll make the park be self-sufficient, go ahead and tell everybody, all right?
I will.
But you know what? Just sitting there with a smirk saying, "This isn't going to work," you know, constructive. That's what I'd like to see. So, tell us what you think they should be and why, and we can determine whether or not that's self-sufficient for the park as well. So, we'll vote on this next time?
I thought both documents were well thought out and addressed a lot of the gray areas that we were struggling with this last year concerning rentals and concerning offering consideration to different groups that wanted to use the park and wanted some consideration from council. So, I think Park Committee deserves a little thanks.
Well, thank you, Bob. And also keep in mind, Leslie, that I think another way that we can look at this is the $3,000 that we've talked about giving the grant committee, if you want that to be more, that can be more. And that is a way that the village can entice other folks to put on things in the park and offset some of these costs.
I did want to ask you, has the committee thought about marketing it, like being able to market it outside of, you know, residents and organizations that are here, as I've been talking about?
Yes. We, we have a, I don't want to call it 12, I think we have set up 12 things to discuss over our comprehensive plan. We didn't discuss that in particular as it relates to this, but I know that's one of the topics on our agenda. When we'll get to that this morning, so I don't know, but yeah. Any other questions? No? All right. So, if anyone has any other questions or comments, obviously feel free to let all of us know before next meeting and then we can bring this to a vote. Personnel Finance.
We met on September 1, where we discussed Kevin's final budget, which you all have copies of. Kevin, would you like to go over that? Or does anybody have any questions? What would everyone like to do?
What I'd like to see, if you could just highlight the changes from last year's budget to this, if there are any substantial ones, perhaps that would be easier, kind of bring that to the rest of our attention since we're involved in the meeting. That work?
Kevin?
I'd like to see kind of a summary where we have total budgeted expenses, less general fund revenue, less dedicated fund revenue, less access to general fund reserves and see what, what nets out at, at the end of the day. I can't quite see that right now.
Yeah, sure.
I asked, I asked Renee for that and I think actually she misunderstood my question. She did give this email. Did this go to everybody today? Should, did everyone get a copy of this? Should I pass it out?
Yeah, email.
And I guess there goes some miscommunication between us, but I'll sit down with Renee and we'll get one together for next meeting.
Okay. Table, table, anything else from Personnel Finance?
Is Rocknow being involved in this? Because I thought that was part of their deal where it's that they were helping us with the budget for this year.
Yeah. That wasn't, yeah, I don't think it was part of the deal, no.
I thought that's originally why we got Rocknow. I mean, that's what it all came about last year was during the budget, we needed somebody to help us budget and that's why we were using them. I mean, we're paying them already.
I think they, they offered us some criteria upon which to make budget decisions and how to, how to make value judgments and it was kind of a, kind of like a class for council to get ready to go into the budgeting process, or at least that's the way I view it. I'm very pleased with what they presented tonight as far as figuring out ways to generate future revenue. I thought that was very well presented, though.
I can't recall off the top of my head, but I don't recall them and the recommendations, make any recommendations as to things that we...
I think, oh, this was when they first started with us. It was a part of the actual recommendations or whatever, but when they first started with us, I thought that was part of their, they now look over our budget and assist us.
Do you think they ought to come out and help us with this budget now before we...
I think they should look at it before we go.
Right now, we're doing everything wrong, what they say we're supposed to do.
You two being on the Personnel Finance, think that they were doing any benefit to add to Rocknow.
What do you think, Renee? I think... I mean...
Well, we'll leave it up to you if you want to engage them. And we have an agreement with them, whether that's covered by what we already have, I don't, I don't know. Anything else?
No.
All right.
There was a resolution.
That will come at the end. Don't we? Yeah.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Fire?
Fire? There's no fire tonight. I mean, it's just...
That's good.
Last month, they used 462 gallons of fuel and all the round maintenance on everything at the firehouse was around $6,000. And they had 37 fire runs and AMS runs. And they hired six new people and one resigned already. So, other than that, that's about it for this one.
Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on to the rest of our visitors. Robert, Robin, Robin Deigert is here to speak. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Robin Deigert and I'm with the Columbus Dispatch. I'm the Field Logistics Operations Manager. Ultimately, the delivery of the bag is my responsibility, not the daily newspaper. And I understand that we've had some delivery issues in Plain City and I just wanted to get before you tonight and reassure you that I'm on that. I speak with some Madison County businesses on a weekly basis to stay in contact with them and hear what they're hearing from some of their advertisers. All of our carriers are independent contractors. We do terminate contracts when delivery is not made in the way that we expect it to be made. I'd gladly give my phone number and email address to anyone who would like to have it. Please contact me directly. We'll skip the middle people and, and address these issues. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that, like I said, we're, we're on top of it. We feel that we provide a service. There are residents of Plain City who are contractors and earn fees from our company. I know the residents use the bag because it has all the grocery ads in it. And we, we just started with Giant Eagle this past week, so we, we do have all the grocery ads. And that was mostly what I wanted to say. And I gladly answer any questions or leave my phone number and email address for anyone who would like to contact me if there's any delivery issues. Please let me know directly.
I have a question. Are they supposed to hang it on the doorknob or just throw it out in the street?
No, it's supposed to be on the porch.
Ooh.
Or the mail post if there is, if the mail, if the mail is delivered. Can I get the address for this?
The 653 Wesme.
653 Wesme?
Right. Two weeks in a row it's been like that. It's always been like that out there. On that picture I took, half of, half of the ads is down in the other pile.
Well, this is exactly the kind of thing that I, the information that I wanted to get because, like I said, I will address this in the...
I've got some more pictures in my, on my calendar.
No, that's, that's, I, I, I trust you.
It's right across on the firehouse.
Okay. No, this will be addressed and I appreciate you letting me know.
They've always said, mine, just throw it out there. And then you guys, sometimes when you guys blow on the grass, he, sometimes he almost gets into it because you don't see it.
Or a snow blower this winter.
Always in the snow.
Right. Yeah. I, I, no, I want this cleaned up. This is not how we contract carriers to deliver.
Well, if you go around town, I think you see it all over town.
Well, I, I will definitely get that taken care of.
But they want to try and make some laws and rules and stuff, but I think you're, it's your place to straighten it up and there won't be no laws.
I completely agree.
But we don't need laws. We got nothing else.
No, I, I completely, I completely agree. That's why I'm here.
Ms. Deigert, last, at our last meeting, we discussed, I think it was mentioned by somebody, I want to say Mr. Vaughn, that folks can opt out and contact you if they don't want to deliver the event. That is...
That is correct.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time coming into the rest of the...
Well, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Deigert? No? All right. Moving on to Darren Lane.
Good evening, Chief Seats. As one of your council members calls us back here, I just have a few questions. One, and I think I know the answer to this, does council get paid $150 per meeting? And who sets that pay since one of your council members doesn't seem to know how that comes about? Maybe if you could enlighten us?
It is $150 to pay a, a meeting. I don't know when that was established.
It was set by ordinance and no seating member of council could vote.
It was the previous.
His, his pay, so it was done by a previous council.
Thank you. Another thing is, I'm here tonight, as most of you know, I'm running for mayor, hopefully all of you know, and I'm here to defend myself. What have I done for the village? Myself and my committee, there's few here, we've had over 137 meetings and we've met with planning, zoning, we've met with a ton of people. We met with builders, developers, landowners, economic developers. All these meetings that we, we're up at 7:00 every morning, so please don't say, "What have we done for the village?" We have a whole list of people. And I know it's all on social media, but you know, social media, this is my campaign. I don't think this is for council to get involved in.
Who said, who said that?
You can go back through social media, Facebook, Leslie's, all the time, it's always, "What has Darren Lane done for the village?" Well, what Darren Lane's done for the village this week? I met with the economic developer. I met with 10 landowners, four developers, three builders, half dozen small, small business owners, and most importantly, the residents. So, I don't know, I mean, am I campaigning against council or am I campaigning against other people?
Is there somebody on council is putting this on social media?
He's free to me and I have, what have I said? Quote me, show me.
Everyone's saying here, no. We've been through this a thousand times. My recommendation to council is maybe have a compliance and ethics class. You know, that, that's my only recommendation to council as a citizen, is a compliance and ethics class because I'm trying to do everything I can to meet with people, and I'm putting out a fire with someone that has not a clue what I'm doing. So, that's just one of the things. And you know, another thing is, small business and government, I realized, isn't the same. And the day I realized that is when I watched the Baseball Association come in and ask for $3,000 toward their fence. How many estimates did they bring? Did they, there's 75 fencing companies in central Ohio. How many did they go to and say, hey, we got a beautiful ball diamond. Would you be interested in putting in a fence? I just think there needs to be a checks and balance in this village.
Yeah. Not that you asked the question there, but we actually went through that in Parks and Committee. That was all through the Parks Committee. You just didn't see that in council, but that did take place.
Okay. And I'm glad it did because that was something that I didn't-
No problem. It's a valid concern, but that was addressed.
So, council was aware of the difference?
Well, the way it works is the committee, the Parks Committee handled that particular aspect and came forward to council with a recommendation based upon what we, what we learned in the Parks Committee.
So, you know, that's just a few things I want to talk about this evening. That's it. I know there's a lot. I won't hold you guys up any longer. I don't think that this is your campaign. This is mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Well said.
All right. I apologize for the next individual. I don't know that I, I read your last name correctly when I wrote down, but John Dora?
Duwigan.
I'm sorry. Okay. It's gonna be a bit annoying, but I'm sorry.
In relation to this Parks fee setup that you're proposing, excuse my voice, they messed up my voice box five years ago on that survey. But anyway, what you need to stop and think about is, if we raise it, will there be anybody paying it? Now, it's pretty much common knowledge, you guys have been trying to get rid of steam pressure for at least 10 years. And I guess maybe you've found a way to do it. I don't know if that will do it or not, but this isn't dumb. We love the steam pressure. Community supports it. It brings in business to all, basically all the businesses in town. It's something you can't measure, just like some of the stuff that he's talking about you can't measure. You know, you got Lovejoy's, and you got Rex's, and you got True Value, and just on and on and on, as well as the ours and so on and so forth. There's more money comes in on that than people give it credit for.
No, I'm sorry. What was your last name, sir?
Duwigan.
Duwigan?
D-U-I-G.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Duwigan. I think everyone here should have given a 10-year contract, so.
Yeah, I think about six, four years ago, we had steam thresher, the contract stopped. And at the, at the end of the rate that's on the contract, so there's not much, they got, they got a pretty, pretty decent deal, okay? And I'm one of the guys that wants to keep the steam thresher.
Okay. There's a number of people that don't want them.
Well, there's a few people, but majority of the people can't wait till they get here because it gives them something to do, basically older people.
Well, let's take an example of the scooter guys. The scooter guys can't afford $1,000 on the block. They don't have a big enough group. What about them?
Well-
They got 40 people.
Maybe when they come out and ask me for, to sponsor a trophy, I'll give them an extra 50 then.
Somebody's got to give them some to, to make up for what we're trying to do to them.
Well, the thing is, if, if we don't charge more at the park, everybody out here pays for it.
Yeah.
So, we'll try to save all these people out here some money.
But if it fails, and you don't have anybody there, you've lost.
Well, we'll have to do something different.
Yeah, but once you lose them, they're gone.
I know.
Well, again, I appreciate your comments. Again, everyone shares your sentiment about the steam thresher and ensuring that future activities at the park continue. And we're trying to do our best to walk that balancing act of maintaining the park and its ability to be self-sufficient and not putting that burden on taxpayers any more than we already do. And balancing that with the interest of organizations that want to be there. So, again, thank you very much. Mister, or I'm sorry, Amy Rucker?
Yeah, I wanted to mention, I read in the paper the other day about the Rock Mill survey and asking for residents to participate in coming up with survey questions. I was a little concerned about the way the article read. It sounded like we already had plans on spending, how we were going to spend our money. With that being the case, the way, the way that it read, I wanted to say that I think we need to move forward as quickly as we can with this survey, especially when we're going to be asking the residents for more tax money. This is, we were talking about the park today. That's one thing that I think maybe we need to talk about in the survey. How do you want the park fees to look, knowing that we may need to up the taxes to help cover that? If we're going to tell the citizens that we're going to charge them whatever it is, the park fee, I don't, I didn't catch exactly what it was. We need to maybe ask for their, their input in that. The other thing is, we don't, us, we haven't seen this paperwork. We haven't seen what the fees are going to be. We don't know what the, what the, I don't know what, what you were calling it, the paperwork we can fill out to get a dis-
Oh, the grant committee application.
The grant committee applications look like. Is there any way we can view that on the internet? We come to these meetings, and we only hear what you guys are saying, but yet we can't see what's being proposed. So, and for the sake of transparency, is there any way that we can get access to that before these meetings? So, we know what you're talking about.
I know it hasn't been our practice to generally release documents that we've yet to vote on and make part of, you know, official government documents. I mean, at that point, we'd be putting up revision after revision, but it is our general practice, I understand, to, once we pass all the resolution, pass a law, or make something, you know, binding, so to speak, or official, that it's provided to the residents.
So, we have to pass to find out what's in it?
Well, you know, I don't know. I mean, I'll take-
I mean, regulations should be posted so that people know what's being voted on.
Yeah. That's, that's my thing as well, along-
On a regular basis, the things that we've discussed here, we have extra copies. I know we've made them available to the press, and I can't remember us ever turning it down.
Yeah, turn it down. It's not a matter of, I think we're trying to hide anything. Well, it's not that, it's not that. I, maybe what we can do going forward is have more copies of things to pass around for-
Put it in the bag, and everybody will read it.
Because you're going to ask this, I mean, we know we're going to be asked for tax money. And we want to be able to say, hey, we know why we're being asked for this. And right now, we can't, we can't say that because we don't know what's going on.
And we want you to know those things as well.
You know?
Obviously. We want an informed voter base. But to address your, your comment, Ms. Rucker, about the questions in the survey, we all agree it needs to get done sooner than later. We talked about last meeting, asking for volunteers for the comprehensive plan and for the levy committee. And we still have that on the table. We'd like to see folks come forward so we can put that together sooner than later because that's part of what the levy committee would be doing.
But this, this park thing is the perfect thing to ask about on the survey. What do you want from this park? Do you want to have people have to pay that much? Do you, or do you want to make it more open for the citizens? Do you want a resident fee versus an everybody fee? Do you want a difference there? This is the kind of thing we need to ask, I think.
Yeah. We agree on that. And the survey needs to go out, but in order to do that, we need to get the committee together. And we're actively searching for committee members. You number one?
Yeah, I'll do it. If you're going to take it-
You're already voting on it.
You already voted on it?
Sounds like our decision's-
Well, it sounds like you have some wonderful evidence. Anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay. Thank you. That's all of our speakers. All right. So, moving on, we have no old business. Is that correct?
Yeah. Couple comments, please.
Yes.
The budget documents that was distributed, the draft, could you please start putting version control on it? Date, make sure every document's dated, and we know exactly what version it is so we don't get the documents mixed up. Please.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have something to ask. When are we going to have this social media thing in place so we can vote on?
Is that in your court?
Yeah, I drafted something a while ago, months ago. I'm pretty sure I poured it on, didn't I?
Yeah, I think it's, it needs to be dusted off and brought back up.
Next meeting, I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at it because I know, I'm pretty sure I sent it to the mayor. And maybe even the council.
Yeah, okay.
But we'll put it up there next time.
All right. Sounds good. Just more, do you have any other comments?
I'm thinking.
Okay. All right. I guess before we move on to new businesses, we're doing comments. I had a couple of comments. Did we ever finalize that we were going to do or endorse that'd make a difference today? I know we had talked about October 20th, I believe it was.
I think it's the proclamation last, to council meeting, I think it was October 20th or 23rd, whatever.
Okay.
October 24th.
24th. October 24th. Thank you very much. The PCABA then wanted me to confirm that we did that, just kind of throw it out there again, that they'll be at the ballpark. Anyone wants to make a difference at the ballpark and go out there and work with them. One other issue that I had, I have, in my neighborhood, one of the houses, folks had a goat for many months. I could hear it, whatever goats do, braying or, I don't know what goats do, whatever it's called, for months. And as I understand it, there is nothing in our regulations prohibiting folks in our village from having livestock in their backyard. Based upon me bringing it up, you can all guess, and I probably don't think that that's a good idea, to ask any realtor how it is to sell a house besides somebody who has goats or chickens or pigs. And they would probably tell you that you would have a lot of time trying to get your value back out of your house because your neighbor decided to have a farm on less than one acre. So, any thoughts on that?
Part of that's being addressed in the property management scheme.
Such animals? You could have one goat in your backyard?
I think we need to tweak that a little bit. I'm sorry, but I, I didn't pick up the fact that, I, I knew the issue was on chickens, and I have neighbors with chickens and roosters, not really happy about it, but it hasn't really bothered me. But if you're getting to larger animals, I think that's a health problem, to be honest with you.
I think it's a health problem. And again, as I said, I mean, it, it seriously, ask any realtor, it decreases the property value of your-
Hang on. We'll, we, oh, no, never mind. I'm sorry. I was reading the wrong section. Goats, pigs, sheep, horses, llamas, et cetera, are only permitted in rural districts.
All right. So, you can have one of what such animal then?
The one of what's, the one animal you could have is a chicken, duck, rabbit, or similar animals. Keeping of chickens, ducks, rabbits, or similar farm animals in cages and coops and enclosures for the keeping of such animals shall be governed by the following restrictions, and it's one animal.
You can have one chicken?
Yeah. Well, no, it's on the size of the lot. Yeah. No more than one such animal should be kept on a parcel plan for each 870 square feet. No more than six, yeah, it was like, no more than a 10 total such animals, six of which may be chickens.
And does that address roosters?
No, no roosters.
Okay.
And no goats.
What does that mean for their desert? Their desert is not- They have horses.
They have horses. This is, this is in residential districts that we're talking about.
I thought you said only rural.
Non-residential districts.
Okay. Back to the realm. All right. New business.
Yeah, it's incorporated. That's like the last part. The only one that's not incorporated is the blue house that sits just south of it. Yeah, that's our thing.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt over there. Vicentennial Fund.
I'm still waiting from the state. I emailed them today asking about it, and I have not heard back, so.
All right. So, we'll table that. Surcharge ordinance amendment. You sent this out to us, right?
Yep.
Any comments, questions, concerns about that particular resolution?
It's just, it's the same, yeah, and we didn't actually move it into different funds. It was always going into the correct fund. It's just in the ordinance, it stated something different.
It's ordinance 4-15.
I have a motion. This is going through the normal three readings. Okay. Motion to approve 4-15.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And the budget amendment, police and street. Is that one we've already tabled? No?
This year.
Yeah, these are preparations.
Police resolution for the $20,000 is 2115.
That's for the new vehicle.
Can I ask a question?
Please do.
Chief, is that what we talked about, the, the new police cruiser? It was indicated that it was within your 2015 budget.
Yeah, great. But it's not within my 2015 budget. It's money re-appropriated from my police funds.
Oh, from the police fund. Okay. Okay.
It's not from the general fund.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are we good? Got a little bit of number on that?
2115.
I have a motion for 2115.
Motion to approve the first reading of 2115.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And then, I assume, 2215 for the appropriation of the money for the improvements to the lantern lane.
This is coming out of the street.
Street reserve fund. I have a motion for that.
Motion to approve 2215.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right, concludes our new business.
I have a question. I don't know what, are we bringing up the lieutenant spot for the police department after the budget? Then we're talking about the budget next time, because we were supposed to bring up the resolution for the new lieutenant's position.
That wasn't on our new business.
I'm not sure I read that personnel finance minutes either.
You know, we're starting out. No, it was discussed, I, I know.
No, we discussed it in personnel finance several times.
Right, yeah.
Because I had even drawn, I, remember I made up the resolution and everything?
I don't remember, James, I'm sorry.
I, I passed it out to everyone.
Okay, but that's for 2016, you're wanting to do that for now, right?
Oh, that's your budget, that's your budget.
Okay, I want to start the process, so to get the lieutenant spot.
Oh, okay.
But if we have to wait for the budget to be approved, I guess, I mean, we can wait because we still have time, I believe.
I got a question. What's the minimum bid of a lieutenant or having two sergeants?
Well, because a lieutenant does administrative work, and we used to have a lieutenant, when Chief Hillbrook was here, Jim Hill was a lieutenant. And once, when Jim became chief, they get, they did away with the lieutenant spot. All of that lieutenant's administrative duties were dumped, I don't want to say dumped, but given to both sergeants, myself and Sergeant Jaskiewicz at the time. So we're actually, Sergeant, both sergeants have been doing administrative work for the last, you know, how many years now? And I'd like to get that lieutenant spot back. I have a lieutenant, or a sergeant that's 14 years, 14 years of experience as a sergeant, and I like to keep moving forward so it looks, I mean, that he always looks forward to something that, I mean, to better himself, or not just the sergeant, anybody at the police department, something to look forward to, to move, you know, to move up to a different position.
Do you mind taking your job?
Once I resign, or.
You retire.
Or when I retire, yes. That's what I'm trying to do, is try to get, you know, to develop that person to maybe take my job one of these days after I retire. Does that answer your question, or, I mean, I can go on.
Does it, is the inspector position being discussed during the board session correct?
Inspector? Or investigator?
Investigator.
Well, that's only, you know, maybe after March. I don't have, I don't have the money to do that.
It's a different thing, right?
Right, that'd be higher than that.
75,000, is that correct?
Yes.
And creating a new lieutenant's position would cause what kind of cost to the village?
Well, it would increase salaries, of course, and it would increase the chief salary and the lieutenant's salary, which would be the sergeant would increase his salary.
How would it increase your salary?
Probably by $4,000 at the time I top out.
But why would it increase your salary?
Because if you have a lieutenant spot between a sergeant's spot, the sergeant, lieutenant's definitely might have to make more money than the sergeant.
Why? You know, I mean, why does that increase your salary?
Because if not, then the lieutenant would be making as much money as the chief.
And is there some regulation or ordinance that says that that has to, there has to be that delineation?
Well, what benefit would it be to be the chief if I had to?
No, I'm just asking, I'm not being, I'm not attacking, I'm just curious, is that per any regulation, or is that just something that you need to establish a hierarchy amongst the officers yourself?
Exactly. So, I'm not doing it to get a raise, I'm doing it to change the structure of the police department, to make the police department a better place, a more place, or a better place for, that people want to still work for, or still work at. We've been very lucky to keep the people that we have for the years that we have, because it used to be a training ground for people just to come in and work, and then move to a bigger agency. So I, I want to give something for the guys to look forward to, you know, to advancement.
Establish a career path.
Right.
And you're still in your budget, right?
Yes, I'm still within my budget.
All right, so this is something we're going to address next meeting?
Yes.
Obviously, there's nothing prepared for this one, so. Or is that something we're addressing next year with the budget?
No, next meeting.
Next meeting?
Next council or next personnel finance?
Next council.
Okay.
Are we going to ask Rock Mill to help us go with this before?
No, I think we're, we're perfectly capable of discussing it, make a decision.
Well, what I don't like about it is, we're supposed to have $1.28, and we're going backwards. If we keep spending the money we got saved by, of course, you know, we don't have no money saved by. Then we might have to start laying off someone else.
To be able to get to a consolidated, like, balance sheet, which I mentioned earlier, and I think, Renee, you caught what I had asked for. Okay. It's a way where we can see what the net of the budget is, and what, what the remaining general fund reserve is, estimated to be at the close of this year, at the close of next year. It's just a few, few things that we need to, to look at to be able to make a credible decision on passing the budget or not, and that'll answer whether your concern's valid or not.
Yeah, they, they, well, they told us in the review that we shouldn't go backwards.
I'm not sure I heard that.
I'm not sure what you mean by go backwards.